Which is a view of the pond at the moment. Um, in addition to that, I would like to request if possible that, um, and I don't know if this is a legitimate request, but whatever construction takes place, that it not take place during the summer months. I'm here all summer and I've lived through construction of new homes during the summer and the street's not very big and the construction vehicles alone take up a lot of the street and I'm sure that would be the case with this project. And those are the high use months and we all have access to Oyster Pond from this street, those of us that live on the street and would like to be able to continue to have that access without construction vehicles. And in addition, the noise from early in the morning through daylight on previous projects has been extremely challenging to those of us around. So I just wanted to request that if possible. And I think those are the points I'd like to make today, if I may.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to express their views or has a question?
I see no one else that would like to speak in opposition or has a question.
Mr. Riley, would you like to answer the ladies' two concerns, please?
Uh, yes, the, uh, I was standing on the street level in front of, uh, Ms. Harvey's house. So I wasn't high enough. I was just, you know, as I say, looking at the street level and it seemed to me that the trees behind the building, uh, would prevent any significant view. Um, so I apologize to the extent that my comments were misleading in any way. The, uh, uh, I think that, as you know, from the cases that have come before us, the view of one particular neighbor, uh, is not, you know, the neighbor is not the protection called for in our bylaw. The, uh, the question is whether it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Uh, and the, I think, again, with all due respect to, uh, Christine Harvey, uh, you know, this is a very modest change, I think, in the neighborhood and the proposed structure is very much in keeping with the design of the other properties. And given the constraints of the lot, I think that, you know, Tim did a good job of, of, uh, designing something that was, that fit into the neighborhood very nicely.
And her request about a condition?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Riley. Questions from the board? Dave Veach.
I don't have any questions, Dan.
So do I get to ask Sarah a question?
Sure.
Well, I've asked you this before. The prints that I received in my package are eight and a half by 11. And I can't read any of the dimensions on blueprint. I can read some, but not all. So half the numbers aren't worth much. Blueprint A1 and A1.1. Did you shrink them or this is an exact replica of what they submitted?
You should have received 11 by 17s.
Buck, my apologies. I got an 11 by 17, but that doesn't change the results. I can't read the numbers.
That is the size we received.
Thank you. No more, no further questions?
Randy?
No questions.
Paul?
I have no questions.
Dave Thompson?
Uh, Dave Thompson has no questions. May I address Mr. Upson?
Sure.
Thank you. Buck, I have the same problem and I've resorted to a magnifying glass on all of these age.
Okay, I have a, Mrs. Harvey, are you still there?
Yes.
Well, I have a question for you. You talked about the views from your home. How about the other homes that surround your home? In what way are they impacted by this construction?
Well, thanks for asking that. I rose, I raised my hand again to comment on that. Um, the house up the hill directly beside this property will be, I'm surprised the homeowners aren't on this call, they will be dramatically affected. Um, the house next door to me heading down the hill, which is more kitty corner across the street from 67 Capri, will be quite affected. Those are the two homes that I know for sure, in addition to my own. So there's three. All of our views will be dramatically affected by the height of this structure.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so with regard to that, particularly with the house, with regard to the house directly up the hill, the, uh, the fact is that that house would have views on either side of our proposed structure. Clearly it would have some impact on it, but that might be why that person has not objected in any way to the proposal. The building further down the street, uh, from the Harvey residence, uh, has a view to the right of the building and also has a view between the two buildings at the very end of the street. So, you know, while it's going to have some impact on it, that house clearly still has views. And again, they had an opportunity to appear and have not appeared. So I think the, uh, it's reasonable, uh, to conclude that since they're not objecting as to their view, that their views are not negatively impacted.
So maybe mine are the only ones that are significantly impacted then. But I don't have a view down the street. I have a view over the top of the existing home at the moment.
Okay, thank you. All right, Paul?
There's a hand up over in the audience there.
Ah, yes.
Yes, I'm Kathleen Peters.
Okay, Kathleen, here's the story. You'll have to go up to the microphone. We are slaves to the television and that's the way it is.
You mean that one or one of these here?
One of those two, right up there. Just re-staged. Just restage your name, please, and your address.
Okay. My name's Kathleen Peterson, and my husband, Peter Hahn, and I have a summer home on the next street over. Winsong Land, I was going to give the wrong address. Winsong Landing, up at the top of the enormous green area, natural space that has existed forever there in our neighborhood that we share with Capri Lane. And it is a very unique space in Chatham, I think, and I think that it's unfortunate to learn that a double story is being added to what was before, a very open view for everyone, and it, I think, is going to change the character very much to expand what was a very, very small structure in the manner that is proposed. It's certainly a lovely home. I see that anyone would want that, but is that the right location, given the natural wildlife and that setting in which it is being placed, on the edge of? And certainly, it will impact, and I will also add to the statements before by the caller, it will dramatically impact the view that we have of the pond, which we treasure. But as I say, more importantly, it's the character of the entire area, which is so unique to that part of Chatham, and I think it's a pity that that is going to happen, because that home, as lovely as it is, it really is out of character in terms of that double height for what was there previously. So I was, you know, distressed when I learned of this, and I wanted to come in and hear the details and see the image of what it was going to be, what is proposed to put in there, and I think it does not fit, given the scale and the natural beauty, and also just the ecological effect of that area. To have something that large is such a change from what has been there historically.
Thank you. Yes, Buck?
Ma'am?
Yes.
Extra innings, please. I think I heard it, but I'm not sure. Did you say you live year-round, or you're just summer residents?
Well, we're going to be year-round, because my husband is completing his educational career as a professor this year, and we live in Rhode Island, very close by, two hours away, but we've had the house since the '80s and up at the tip of our street, and so we will be becoming year-round residents. And as I say, I'm just deeply disappointed that this step is going to be taken in what was previously a very modest, on what was a very modest lot. I mean, the space is narrow and small, but I'm disappointed to see that such a grand type of home is being stuck in that particular site.
So my follow-up question is, and I was glad that you did explain that while you're summer now, the intentions are year-round. I too live on a beautiful spot, similar to what you've described, and what we find, we can't see salt water in the summer at all, like we couldn't see the Oyster Pond, but we're not on Capri, we're around the corner. But amazingly enough, there's something called autumn and winter, and the leaves go down, and we have a beautiful view in the winter, when all the leaves are down. So my concern isn't addressing just two or three months, but it's 12 months a year, and for six, we have a beautiful view of the water, and I suspect that you will have a fuller view when the leaves go down.
No, 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 we've had this home for decades. I'm very aware of the view in all seasons, and we use the house year-round, so even as not as our primary home right now because of my husband's profession, but, you know, that is immaterial to this. It's that this is becoming a permanent doubling height on what was an exceedingly natural setting until what it may become.
Thank you very much for answering my question.
Excuse me, let me just follow up with one more question, and that is, your address, is it 39 or 40 Winson?
39 Winsong Landing.
39?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Okay. Did you want to say something, Mr. Riley, before we?
Yeah, candidly, I wasn't prepared to respond to people from Winsong Landing. I don't know if Sarah has the ability to put the assessor's map up so we can see the relationship, but the, you know, the... Okay, so that's 39 is your resident?
Yes, we own the property.
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to be improper.
All right, so, again, with all due respect, the, as you see the site plan, you know, this is actually a double lot that was developed back in the days when 10,000 square feet was considered generous. So the lot is actually 20,000 square feet with the two lots, and the, and the building is pretty much contained within the footprint of the existing structure. I mean, the footprint of the building's only 1,500 square feet. The entire north section is going to remain natural. The, there's a invasive plant removal and mitigation plan that's going to be in the thousands of dollars and improve the mix of plants, replacing invaders with natives. They're going to improve wildlife habitat to a great degree, and the open space to the north, you know, behind the leach field, which is up at the street level, is going to remain open forever. So I can appreciate that change can be painful for some. I think that a 1,500-square-foot footprint is modest in this setting, and the, although, you know, will have some impact on the Harvey residence, I think that the, on balance, the other structures in that neighborhood are not going to have any significant impact. I mean, if you look at 47, which is the one that Ms. Harvey was concerned about, the, they have views off to the left and right, which aren't going to be affected at all. And in fact, 85, which is past 67, is a two-story building, so I don't know that they'd be looking in that direction, in any event. And again, 68, I can't remember if it was 68 or 56 that Ms. Harvey was talking about?
56.
56 is your address, Christine?
No, she's 48.
No, I'm 48.
You're 40, okay. All right, so 56, the, it's quite high, and I believe their real view and their picture windows and the end of the house facing towards the water is right down between 85 and 86. They might also have some views to the right of 68 as well. So, again, they have many views, and we're going to reduce one of those views. So I think that, you know, the building is below maximum building height, significantly below maximum building coverage, even considering the fact that we have some wetlands on the property. So I think it's a fair use of this property. I mean, the structure that's there, you'd say, well, why don't you expand it at one level? That would be because we can't. The part of the problem with this property is, the more you expand the footprint of the building, the more you run into issues that are a serious concern to the Conservation Commission. And so here we've left open almost 10,000 square feet, that'll be permanently open, and the, as I say, there's going to be a significant improvement in the septic system and in the wildlife habitat, and actually, the beauty of that area, because all the invasives are going to be removed and replaced with natives. So we think the, you know, that this proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Dave Veach, I have one question of you, because usually you have these numbers handy. How many feet is this ridge going up over what's existing?
It's on the plan, Dave.
It's going from, the ridge elevation is going. Existing is 37.1 feet, and the proposed is 47.4, so 10.3 feet is the, over the existing.
Okay, yeah. Okay, any other questions? I think, you know, I allowed, was it your wife?
May I?
Into this. You didn't raise your hand at the time that I asked for it.
Okay. Go ahead.
May I ask one further?
No. Buck, I'll tell you what, I'll let you.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, well, actually, it's more of a point based on what Mr. Riley just said. If number 48 Capri Lane...
Mrs. Harvey, excuse me.
Yes?
There's a gentleman that's about to speak. There's a gentleman that's about to speak. Go ahead.
Oh, I thought you were talking to me.
No, I wasn't talking to you.
I'm Peter Hahn, Winsong Landing. My point, I have a key point about the conservation-controlled land by our house down to the water. There is a huge grove of trees that separates the wetlands from this house. If that grove of trees is eliminated with some other plantings, that's going to have a huge impact on our view of that house. And I propose that that grove of trees not be allowed to be cut down and replaced with other trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Paul?
I will move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds.
Sarah tells me that Dave Clark wanted in. Dave Clark?
Yeah, I just, if it's okay with the board to respond to the tree issue, this project was permitted by conservation. We have an order of conditions in hand. The only trees that are to be removed are two trees or three trees up at the street to install the septic system. There was a very large tree to the southwest of the existing house that was a particular concern of the commission, and we're actually, part of the mitigation of the project is to remove the ivy and basins from that tree, so that tree can be preserved. So no trees are coming out west of the existing house. So that whole line of trees adjacent to the wetland are not going to be touched at all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Paul?
I have moved to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
And Dave Veach seconds.
Okay, we need a vote on that? Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Dave Thompson, yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, deliberation. Buck?
Well, I guess I'll start off by saying, back when I served on conservation, we used to have people put split-rail fences up on, and the laws haven't gotten easier, so that I'm comparing apples to apples, best I know. We used to request and require and input in the order of conditions, you will install a split-rail fence along the no-disturb-zone buffer, and you won't mow the lawn on the other side. And as I look at this print, I see the house, I'd say the majority of the house appears to be in the no-disturb-zone. There's a large patio, and there's a pool in the no-disturb-zone. So I don't know what conservation was doing. I did go try to look at them on TV, YouTube, and their last meeting on the 24th was four hours long. I, you know, I just went, well, that's going to be, not going to happen. So I am concerned what I heard from the neighbors. I'm concerned what I know about no-disturb zones, but I think the biggest thing that bothers me, and it's my fault, but it still bothers me, I spent a career reading blueprints, and when I get a blueprint you can't read, or the numbers are, I don't, you know, maybe I should go by a microscope, but I'm not going to. I'm considering this application incomplete, and I think that tells you how I'm going to vote.
Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we're charged with a different standard than the Conservation Commission, as, I don't have to tell you that. So the fact that you write on your findings that the conservation, that we believe the site is suitable for the proposed work because Chatham Conservation has issued an order of conditions, I don't think that really means anything. So I think that what means something is whether or not we find that this project is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and I think on what we've heard, so you look at the suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties, I think they've made their case. On the natural environment, again, they've made their case. The vegetation, wetlands, and when people built those houses in that area, they probably built ranch houses because of that area. And so maybe this would be a good spot for more of like a little bit of a rambling ranch, if that was possible, but I wouldn't vote for it.
If I could respond briefly?
No, Mr., I think we all need to be heard. Paul?
Well, I agree with Mr. Riley that when we're talking about views, we're not necessarily talking about views from a particular property, although we do take into consideration the input from individuals who have houses that are being impacted, such as we've heard with respect to number 48, Capri Lane. I think perhaps Mr. Riley is correct that there are some views to the right or between 85 and 86 that may mitigate the effect that a larger home would have on the views and vistas. But I guess my concern is perhaps more on the effect on the neighborhood with respect to the size of the building that's going in there. The footprint is not substantially larger, as Mr. Riley has pointed out. It's going to about 1,700 feet from...
1,500.
1,500 feet from about 1,200 or so. And so I don't see that as having a particular impact, but I do see the size of the building as having a fairly significant impact on the look of the neighborhood. The only buildings that I can see that are of this size are at the very end of Capri Lane at 85 and 86, and that whole street goes downhill from, at least it appeared to me, to go downhill from, going from south to north, so that those larger homes perhaps have not as much impact on the neighborhood itself. And if you consider the neighborhood to be more of Capri Lane than just 85 and 86, I think this house does have a large impact on that area. So I'm concerned about the overall size of the building and whether that is suitable, and what its impact is on the neighborhood properties.
Dave Thompson?
After listening to Paul and to Randy, I think it is big. After listening to, to Paul and to Randy, I, I think it is big. It's bigger than, much bigger than the houses as you're going in from Cedar Street. It's a beautiful home. I would be, I would be voting for this. It is big, but I don't think it will power the neighborhood. Thank you.
Dave Veach?
Well, I'm, I, I think, I, I guess I can come to a bottom line that I, I feel like I can support this as not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I, when I was out there, I kind of tried to do my own assessment of the, the look of it with respect to Capri Lane. And clearly there are, and, and, I mean, the house is there, there's not much to it, and there are a few other homes on Capri Lane that, that aren't much larger than that at this point. But I also, you know, wouldn't be surprised in the future to see proposals come to expand or change some of those homes. There, it looks like there are, some homes have expanded probably from what they were initially. The question, the views, that's a tough one. I, I think I'm more inclined to follow the guidelines of neighborhood views and vistas, meaning people with, people walking down the street or whatever, rather than the, the potential view impact to individual neighbors. I also know, I think that, in my opinion, anyway, I, I've seen people react very, in very concerned way when they think that their views might be being impacted some way or another. And, and I, I don't often, when, when I go back and I get a chance to go back and look at the situation, at least in some past instances, I, I've not agreed with people that they were, you know, they weren't losing, they were losing maybe a part of a view that they had, but not the entire view. So it's hard in, in not being out there to, to assess that based on the information I have today, but it looks like that, it looks to me like it doesn't have serious impact on views of enough neighbors to rise to that level, for me. I think that, you know, this is not, seems like we're seeing lately in, in instances of apparent massing of two-story homes. And this is another one, in that, that, that is, it's, it's basically a two-story and replacing a one-story. But I do think that Mr. Riley is correct, the, the, you know, the constraints of what the Conservation Commission's concerns do make it difficult to propose to expand laterally, although I'm, I'm a little surprised by how much patio that they let go, but that's not my, I didn't, I don't know how that came about. I guess I just felt that in, I feel like in this setting and in this case, it does not, it, it's not a huge house, but I think apparent, as an apparent and essentially a two-story structure, it, it does appear larger than I think it perhaps actually is or will be. So, long story short, as I started, I'm saying I will support it.
Well, from my perspective, I'm concerned about two things. Number one is exactly what Paul said, you know, the massing of this structure. I think it's out of place, and we had one of the individuals who wanted to speak about, you know, the change in the neighborhood and all that kind of stuff. Well, you know, this is, this is a much bigger structure than what was, what's there now and what's going to happen. But number two, we've heard from two neighbors whose views were impacted. And Mr. Riley pointed out, well, we didn't hear about, from the others. Well, we didn't hear anything in favor either. We didn't hear, plus, we didn't hear a minus. And so I have to believe that there's probably four or five homes in total that are going to be impacted, their views, that to me qualifies as the neighborhood. It's not just one, it's a bunch. So I would have a very difficult time voting for this. In fact, I would vote against it. Your call.
Well, you know, the, the, the fact that one of the neighbors, you know, their view is they can see the house. It doesn't affect what they're looking at, but they can see the house. And you're going to say, well, because they can see the house and they don't like the design, that's a reason to vote no.
No one said that. Anyway.
That's what it sounds like to me. Plus, with all due respect to Randy, you know, if you read, if you read the criteria, you know, when I say the Conservation Commission has issued an order of conditions, they've dealt with all the criteria in, in that, all the items listed in that criteria. And it suggests, well, well, you can't just say the Conservation Commission approved it. I mean, it's, it's, you know, and, and Buck, maybe he still wishes he was on the Conservation Commission, I don't know. But it seems to me that, you know, this is a, a very modest house. You know, we include the, the basement area because we're forced to, but the house is at, at the end of the street, which is what we're closest to. And all the houses on the street are going to look over our property. I mean, Christine Harvey said she's still going to look over the top of the property.
Mr. Chair, do we have a point of order?
Uh, no such thing here. Buck?
Do I get to talk?
Absolutely.
I believe we had a motion to close everything, and at the head of the meeting, didn't you say after we close it, nobody gets to talk except? Now, you've asked the applicant if he would like to continue out of courtesy, or we can just go to vote.
Well, I think that's where we're headed. So, Mr. Riley, let's wind this up. Would you like us to vote, or would you like to do something else?
So we'll continue?
Yep.
So we request a continuance.
Where are we? Are we in December yet?
No. Um, I believe it could be October 13th, but it would depend on if there's going to be any revisions to site plan or anything like that, when we could get them, if it would require any re-advertising.
When do you need them by? Because we danced to your tune, Sarah.
That ad will go to the paper on September 23rd, so I would need them a week prior to that, so.
That should be okay. That'd be great.
And that could put you on October 13th.
All right, thank you very much.
Paul?
I'll move to grant the request to continuance to October 13, 2022.
Dave Veach seconds.
Need a vote on that? Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
Dave Thompson?
Dave Thompson, yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
All vote yes, okay. Sarah? 22 dash 068, please.
Application number 22 dash 068, John R. Rylander and Amy Dixon Rylander, care of George Riley, 633 Brook Trail Road, Brewster, Mass. 02631. Owners of property located at 571 Old Harbor Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Accessors Map, 16H Block 4A, Lot C2. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a conforming lot via the construction of a pergola. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and that is located 46 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District. Proposed pergola would be non-conforming, and that it will be located 38 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District, where a 50-foot setback is required. The lot contains 51,044 square feet and an R-40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Riley?
Yes, this is, I'm George Riley, representing the Rhinelanders at 571 Old Harbor Road. We're requesting to build a pergola, and that goes over a proposed masonry-like landing or steps to connect their house to the pool. And this pergola will be approximately maybe 80 square feet within the 50-foot setback to the top of the coastal bank. That coastal bank is demarcated by the 14-foot topographical elevation, but the, but that top of bank is probably 1,000 feet from the Chatham Harbor, which is the high-water mark. So it's a, defined as a coastal bank, but it doesn't really behave like a coastal bank. So this is a, the area that's being considered is now basically lawn and two window wells. As you can see on, do you have the plan up there? Let's go back to the site plan, Sarah. Ah, yeah. Oh, and I don't have my pointer, but you can see the edge of the wetland down there, the 14-foot contour, and then that small area where the arrow is pointing, in the limit of work, that, that small section is of what we're talking about. Is that clear, or am I being vague? Clear, I guess. All right. So that's pretty much it. That's what we're asking for, and it shouldn't be minimal disturbance to vegetation, coastal bank, et cetera. Went before the, the Conservation Commission in July for an amended order of conditions, and they, they have issued an order of conditions covering this proposed pergola. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Is there anyone here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate now you'd like to join the meeting.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor.
I'll read the correspondence. This is from our health agent, Judith Giorgio. She writes on August 23rd, "I have no concerns regarding the proposed pergola." Then we have a note, this is from Nicole Smith. She is our conservation agent. She writes on the same date, "The submitted plan matches what was approved by Conservation Commission, and amended order of conditions was issued on July 11, 2022." And then we have a note, this is from Elizabeth, and her last name is S.C.H.E.N.K.E. She lives at 615 Old Harbor Road. She writes on the 23rd of August, "I respectfully submit my objection. There have been recent changes to the property located at 571 Old Harbor Road, resulting in construction and idling truck noise, as well as additional traffic to Emery Lane. There is a reason for the 50-foot setback required from our Coastal Conservancy District. I ask that the existing zoning bylaw be respected." That's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone in the audience, either here or on Microsoft Teams, that wishes to speak either against this application or has a specific question? If so, please indicate now you'd like to join the meeting.
I see no one that has a question or wishes to speak in opposition.
Okay, we'll have questions from the board. Randy?
I have no questions.
Paul?
I would just ask, Mr. Riley, do you have any comment on the idea of the idling trucks and the noise that's involved in the construction out there?
Yeah, I, I think it was, they were trying to get this thing done because they were having a wedding at that, so there was a lot of concentration of effort. And the, but the only time I, I think I, I know of any trucks that were actually on the road idling was when they were pouring the concrete for the pool. We'd certainly be willing to have construction after Labor Day and, you know, before June, if that's minimal to the board.
Okay, have no, no other questions?
Dave T.
Dave Thompson, no questions.
Dave V.
Dave Veach has no questions.
Buck?
Buck has no questions.
Okay. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds.
Need a vote on that? Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
Dave V.
Dave Thompson, yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, deliberations. Paul?
Well, this is a pretty isolated spot, and I think there's very little chance that there would any, be any impact on the neighborhood from the application that's being made here, so I certainly intend to support it.
I agree with Paul 100%. I will support it.
And I agree as well.
I have nothing more to add, but I will support it.
I would support it if I were voting.
Okay, conditions?
Yes, it sounds as if we could handle this with a standard construction conditions that we have, which would be all construction activity and vehicles to be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. That between June 30th and Labor Day, there would be no exterior construction allowed. No work shall be permitted on weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I, I would say, I mean, I, I'm agreeing, and they've indicated they'd be okay with it, but when I think about it, the, the pergola part, which is the part that we're, we're in control of, is, is probably the less, least amount of noise out of anything that's being done there and will be being done there, so.
All right. Probably takes very long.
I tend to agree. I, I put these conditions on because they were requested in a way by, by a neighbor, and because it was not objected to by the applicant, so.
Okay.
And I would agree with that.
Yeah. All right. A motion, please, including those.
I move to approve the application as submitted with those conditions.
Dave Veach seconds.
Need a vote, Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
Dave Thompson, yes.
Dave Veach, yes.
I vote yes. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you.
Okay, Sarah? 22 dash 069, please.
Application number 22 dash 069, Milpon Trust One, Cheryl A. Martin and Lawrence M. Withers trustees, care of Michael D. Ford Esquire, appeal box 485, West Harwich, Mass. 02671. Owner of property located at 117 Shattuck Place, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Accessors Map, 15C Block 20A, Lot F28. The applicant seeks to modify special permit number 20 dash 027, granted on June 20, 2020, which allowed for the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The applicant now seeks to modify the special permit to allow for the demolition of the existing garage and the construction of a new garage slash accessory structure. The existing garage is non-conforming, and that it is located 16.9 feet from the southerly of butter. The proposed garage slash accessory structure will be non-conforming, and that it will be located 17.2 feet from the southerly of butter, where a 25-foot setback is required. The approved building coverage was 3,794 square feet, 9.9%, and the proposed building coverage is 3,790 square feet, 9.9%, where 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and that contains 38,338 square feet of land area, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R-40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Ford?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Mike Ford, representing the applicants, Cheryl Martin and Larry Withers, who own this property in a trust. The board may recall issuing a special permit for this property back in 2020, and at the time, there were no plans for the accessory structure in the back, and we so advised the board. And now they've come up with a plan for that accessory structure. And so we've applied, Mr. Chairman, in the alternative, either for a modification of that special permit, which we think is clean, and everything would be together, or if the board saw fit, alternatively, a new special permit, if, if that was appropriate. The house that you authorized under special permit is under construction currently. The accessory structure, which is to the rear of the property, and by the way, before I get into the accessory structure, you'll see a pergola in front of the accessory structure that was proposed. I'm not sure it needed any zoning relief, but it has now been taken off the plan, and we filed a revised plan without that with Sarah. So there's no pergola proposed. Very simple accessory structure. It was designed to optimize the roof for solar panels. That's really what this is all about. They're trying to get solar to the house from solar panels on the accessory structure. They will utilize the accessory structure for storage and lawn gear and, and those kinds of things, but the design was optimized for that purpose, solar panels on the back roof. I don't think those, that back roof will be in anyone's view, as I indicated, this is to the back of the property, and I don't believe it's, it's really in, in, in anyone's view shed. But that's what the project is all about. It's to get solar power to the house and the solar panels on that roof design. So in terms of your criteria. So in terms of your criteria, let me say that this accessory structure will be about a half a foot to a foot farther from the setback line, so it gets a little bit better from the rear yard setback than the one that exists there now. And it's about four square feet smaller total area. So about exactly the same, but a little bit smaller in both those regards. So with that, let me go through the criteria. Property is a fairly generous lot, just under 40,038.3. As I indicated, there's a house under construction that you approved. The limitation that you approved was 9.9% building coverage. That included the accessory structure, and so we're not changing that except to make it just a little bit smaller, just acting just about the same, four square feet smaller. The proposed replacement, we think will be in keeping with other accessory structures that are around. There's no increase in nonconformity on the site as a result of this structure. It will not have any negative impacts on neighboring properties or natural environment. There was a scriven as error about a Conservation Commission approval, but I can assure you there are no wetlands on this site, so I've crossed that out. And the petitioner believes there's no negative impact on views, vistas, and streetscapes. And it's not in the floodplain, so number 12 doesn't have application, and I don't believe 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, or 11 really have application to this small accessory structure. So that's our presentation. We did file, because we were asked to, a site plan that had a couple of footnotes on the building coverage, and we did so because the way building coverage is computed by the Building Commissioner's office has changed over time. And the overhangs that are on this house would now be considered under the Building Commissioner's current position because they're more than 2 and 1/2 feet in length as building coverage. But I pointed out to the Building Commissioner, I called him before I filed this, and I pointed out to the Building Commissioner that this house was approved by special permit with the overhangs. They were clearly shown on the elevations that the Board of Appeals approved. And I don't think, frankly, that those who designed the house and created the site plan were aware of the Building Commissioner's change in the way building coverage was computed on that date. I know that Jay made every effort to get it out to folks, design professionals, that he was now looking at it differently. I think he came up with this in November of 19, and then in late February did send out, or the middle of February of 20, sent out a notice that he was going to put it into effect on April 1st. But I think, notwithstanding the best efforts of the town, that really didn't get out to everybody, and clearly it was not part of the presentation before the Board of Appeals. But I did want to bring it to your attention because we don't want to be ending up in a situation where, when we come in for the occupancy permit, and somebody says, oh, now you're over, you're up over 10%. You were supposed to be 9.9% because now you're counting the overhangs because you're required to, because I've changed the way that the overhangs are computed. So, and overhangs not only over stoops, steps, and decks, which was the original November 19 opinion, but now in an email we've received from Jay in 2021, overhangs over grass he's now counting. So, and that, we weren't aware of that when this was built. So I wanted to bring it to your attention because I know you're facing some of these in other areas of the town, and so I wanted to have full disclosure on that. So on our site plan for this accessory structure, we showed those in footnotes. And to the best of my knowledge, I don't think this is one where Jay is going to require that new calculation because of the fact that the special permit that was approved by the board did show all of these overhangs. So just a notice, that's all. I'm not sure it really is germane to your consideration, but I did want to get it on the record, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone here or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate to us now you want to join the conversation.
I see no one that wishes to speak.
Then I'll read the correspondence, which consists of a note from Judith Giorgio, our health agent. She writes on 8/22, "I reviewed the plans to modify the special permit for this property by demolishing the garage and construction of a new one. Property is connected to the sewer. I have no concerns at this time about the project." And that's it. Is there anyone in the audience here or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak against this application or has a specific question? Please indicate now you'd like to join the meeting.
I see no one with a specific question or that wants to speak in opposition.
Okay, we'll have questions from the board. Dave T.
Dave T has no questions for Mr. Ford.
Dave Veach has no questions.
Buck has no questions.
No questions?
Paul. Well, in a way, you've answered one of my questions. One question was, when I went out and looked at the property and I looked at that existing shed, I thought, why wasn't this dealt with at the first time of ground? I think clearly that's not something that you wanted to leave the way it was, given the beautiful house there.
No. You're correct. It took a while to design the solar, and so now they've come up with the best. They've optimized the plan, and this is it.
Okay.
I think they were considering for a while freestanding panels, and then they decided to incorporate them in the structure itself, so.
All right. And then I'm a little confused by the overhang and coverage explanation. Are you saying that if you use current regulations, then you're above the 10% level, and that that puts you into more than a special permit situation?
If you use the current interpretation that's being applied and count all the overhangs, we are over 10%. And I put that footnote, I had Sean Riley put that footnote right on the plan.
Right.
And I'm only bringing it to your attention, I don't believe the billing inspector is going to require that because the overhangs were shown on the elevations that the board approved back in June of 2020. And this particular interpretation, I don't believe, was commonly known or applied at that point. Now, it may have been by some. Now, the dilemma in all of this, for those of us who present these, is that we're now told anytime you do a site plan, measure from the cornerboard and measure all the overhangs if they're more than two feet. So we're now, if this particular building was measured that way, it would end up being pre-existing nonconforming. It would come out 10.3%. We could come in for a special permit as a springboard to get addition. But I've told the billing inspector, he says, well, it's pre-existing nonconforming. I said, no, it's not really pre-existing nonconforming because pre-existing nonconforming is a legal term, which means that the structure had to exist before the adoption of the bylaw that made it nonconforming. There's never been a change in the bylaw. This is all about how you interpret building coverage. So you're going to see many of these situations as a result around town where people come in with a site plan, and the new building coverage, if you count the new things, might show a nonconforming condition, but it's not really legally a nonconforming condition. And my own view is, and I've passed it on, is that we ought to take the new interpretation of the Building Commissioner, just draft it up, submit an amendment to the zoning bylaw, and get it plugged in. And then it does become a provision of the bylaw, and we know what's pre-existing nonconforming and what isn't because it had to exist in time prior to the adoption of the amendment. But that's for us to figure out, and Jay's working with us on it, and he's been very cooperative.
Okay, well, that gives me some explanation. So if it puts you above the 10%, and he applies that application of the, does that put you into a variance situation?
Well, I'd say no here because this house was approved as a special permit.
And would he agree?
At 9.9%. And I think Jay is okay with that on this house because I explained that to him. I called him before I filed this, and I had that discussion. And I said, so what we'll do, just so I can tell the board, your current interpretation or application of building coverage, I'll put in a footnote. In fact, I had Sean Riley actually do it. I don't, Sean, are you on?
Yes, I am, Mike. I can show you, I can present.
I asked Sean to actually come up with a plan in case this became more of a discussion. And you'll see, the green is the overhangs. And those were all on the plan that you folks approved in June of 2020. And if you count all of those, yeah, we're over 10%, but we're not pre-existing nonconforming. So this is all about just an interpretation. And the other thing is that the roof overhangs here are greater than two feet, and Jay is now saying that an eve over two feet needs to meet the setback requirement. So this would be nonconforming in terms of setbacks. Well, these eves were approved. They were part of the design. So, so I said, look, we're going to put them because they were approved, Jay, on the plan. He said, okay, and that's what we did. But we didn't want to run into a situation when this all gets done, that somebody sends us back here for a variance because this was built as to what was approved. This isn't changing anything or going above what the Board of Appeals approved. We just kind of got caught in that transition of how things are being interpreted.
Well, we certainly have been aware of the fact that there have been changes in how the calculation is being done, and that's been explained by Jay and by others.
Well, the setback question with eves is an interesting one, not to belabor this, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but because eves are specifically accepted from the setback area, but Jay has decided if they're more than two feet, then he views them more as an overhang rather than an eve, and therefore he includes them with a setback now, if you go out and measure a house today, and he includes the entire 2 and 1/2 feet, not just the portion beyond two feet. So it's, none of that's in the bylaw. All I'm suggesting is it would be helpful if maybe that got codified, and then we could have nonconforming and pre-existing nonconforming.
Buck.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not quite finished. Oh, you're done?
So an eve in this situation is in the eye of the beholder.
Yeah. And I think, you know, Jay's got some discretion on that, and that's where he's coming down on it. And, you know, I'm not suggesting he hasn't worked hard with us on it, he has, but it's just creates some confusion for these projects that were in the middle.
Fine, thank you. That's the only questions I had.
So I think what Mr. Ford is suggesting is, wouldn't it be nice if we put a letter in the file now from Mr. Briggs confirming exactly what Mr. Ford is suggesting, so we don't have to have another 10 or 15 minutes sometime in the future to talk about overhangs and variance on this particular house that is legal because it was approved for a special permit in June of 2020? Just a thought.
I could add that letter to the file. I was on the call with.
That's right, you were on the call. I called Jay when I prepared the application.
With Jay and Mike.
So we can do that?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we have the email, and I can add that to the folder.
Yeah.
So Paul, Mr. Ford brought up the question, is this simply a modification, or do we need a new special permit?
Well, that's a good question. I have no idea. I think that, I guess I would say it's a new application, given that the shed existed at the time, and there was nothing done with respect to the shed. I don't see any downside to that, and I'm open to listening if you think there is a downside to that, Mike.
I'm not sure there's a downside. I applied, I usually go with the new one when it wasn't part of the other. I went for the modification here merely because we were staying at the same 9.9% building coverage, and you could look at the lot as a whole, and it all kind of worked together. And that's, that's the only reason I did it that way. But whatever you decide, I'm not sure it has a legal distinction, frankly.
And you've applied in both alternatives, right?
I have.
Yeah, so I would suggest the new one.
Okay. Is there any objection to that? All right, Paul.
I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
Dave Veach seconds.
Buck votes yes.
Let me go back. Do we need to close the hearing?
Yeah.
Yes, so I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds that.
Thank you.
Buck votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
Dave Thompson, yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay.
I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
Well, does anybody want to deliberate? No. Okay, go ahead. And you ought to mention the letter that Sarah's going to include that Buck won.
I will move to approve the application as submitted on the basis that those letters are going to be submitted and placed as part of the file.
Okay, and this is a new special permit?
Correct.
Dave Veach seconds.
Buck approves.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you very much.
That's a unanimous vote, and hopefully we won't have to have that discussion again.
Right, thank you. Good suggestion, Buck.
Okay, Sarah, we're on to 22-070.
Application number 22-070, All Real Estate Trust, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 37 Clamshell Drive, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors map, 16A Block 29, Lot H76. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling in a nonconforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, and that it is located 8.8 feet from the road, 11.6 feet from the north of the butter, 15.8 feet from the western of the butter, and entirely within the Coastal Conservancy District, floodplain elevation 13. The proposed dwelling will be nonconforming, and that it will be located 3.4 feet from the road where a 40-foot setback is from the western of the butter where a 25-foot setback is required, and entirely within the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. Also proposed is the installation of a driveway as allowed by special permit under Section 4A 3D of the Protective Bylaw. The existing building coverage is 811 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 860 square feet, where 2,800 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and that it contains zero square feet of buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required, and contains 5,674 square feet of land area where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Sections 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the Protective Bylaw.
Good afternoon. William Riley, on behalf of Allison O. Ms. O would like to introduce herself to the board.
Hi, everyone. I'm Allison O. I'm the owner of 37 Clamshell Drive. I want to take this opportunity here to introduce me to everyone here and tell you a little bit about myself and why I'm doing this project. So I want to give you a summary of my background. I came to the U.S. about 30 years ago with my husband from Hong Kong. We both attend Salem State University. After we graduated, we started with a family here with our three kids. I work at Harvard University as a financial analyst, and I've been there for over 20 years. But sadly, my husband passed away 15 years ago from cancer, but luckily, before his passing, we invested in a few real estate rental properties in the Boston areas, so allowing me to raise my kids, send them to college. My oldest, Brian, is already graduated from college, and my youngest two, Brandon and Kelly, are still in the college. We came to the Chatham, to this cottage, two years ago. I love this very much. I like Chatham because this town is such a unique town, have so much to offer, great neighborhoods, and close access to everything. And I also want to take this opportunity and the time to thank you, my neighbor. They are very accepting me, my partner, Lou, my kids, and my dog, Leo. And this really makes me feel like this is the ideal town for me to retire. And this is why I want to do this project, to make the house a year-round house, adding comfort, necessity, protection from the future flooding. So I have no intention of interrupting the neighborhood and this surrounding community. My goal here is to make the house a comfortable home for me to retire and for my kids to visit. And I believe my project will also benefit the neighborhood by making the area a nicer and a more desirable place to visit and leave. So for this reason, I hope that the board will consider, accept, and approve my project today. And again, I'm here with my team, Bill, Mr. Riley, and Dave Clark, I think he's on the team, and my builder, Donnie, here. If you have any questions, we're here to answer any questions. And thank you for your time. I'm going to pass it to Mr. Riley to talk about my project.
Thank you, Allison. The, so this is, you know, a repeat of what you've seen many times before in this neighborhood, where the property is wholly within the floodplain. The new owner wants to, to work on the house to make it usable year-round and ready for a modern family. That triggers the FEMA requirements of elevating the structure. So they would like to, you know, change the building so it's suitable for Allison and her family on a year-round basis. So that led them to a design that's very similar in the neighborhood, basically a cape with dormers. The, so I think that we've softened the look from what was previously presented, although there's not a significant change in the height of the ridge. We've had conversations with the McConnells next door, particularly with regard to some of the details. And Peter McConnell has sent in the letter, and we're going to make some changes, minor changes to our design based on that letter. But I think that, you know, this is a situation where the floodplain elevation is 13. That means the first floor has to be at elevation 14. So that gives Allison the opportunity to have a garage under, so they can remove a, a car from the street. The, I know there's a, a structure visible from Allison's house on, I think it's Lobster Lane, the next lane over, which has exactly, exactly the same design is under construction now. So I think that the design that Allison has come up with is very much in keeping with the neighborhood. So having said that, I'd like to run through the criteria. So adequacy of the size of the site, in terms of the size of the proposed use. The existing building is 811 square feet, and the proposed building is 860 square feet. As far as we can tell, the only difference is the fact, as Mr. Ford described, we now measure from the corner boards. So the original house, of course, was measured from the foundation. And so when you start measuring from the corner boards, it adds square feet. Also, there is a cover, which is more than two feet in width, over the front door, and that, of course, has to be included as well. And that's the, that's the difference between the 811 square feet and the 860 square feet as, as currently proposed. Compatibility to the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. You know, we've, we've included a list, again, that's the third sheet. The, the structure, you know, if you look at the list. So. You know, our structure, when it's, when it's complete, is going to have 1,720 square feet of living area. And the, the, and so as you can see, if you look at the Clamshell Drive structures, that's a significant increase. But if you look at the Morris Island Road structures, 191 and 181, they've already been elevated. Those structures are, one is 1,897 square feet, that's 191 Morris Island Road, and 181 Morris Island Road is 1,564 square feet. So in terms of structures that have gone through this process before, I believe were very much compatible. The, in terms of other structures in the neighborhood, considering Clamshell Drive and the entrance to Clamshell Drive to be the neighborhood, the 32 Little Beach Road, which is the, the structure on the right as you enter Clamshell, has got 1,981 square feet. The, so I think that if you view this as, are we in keeping with the buildings that have been raised? Yes, we are, very much in keeping. And as I stood on the lawn there today, the, the structure at 16 Scallop Terrace, either 16 or 8, I believe it's 16, though, is currently under construction with virtually identical design to ours, two stories with dormers that are stepped back. And 191 and 181 both have two stories with dormers that are stepped back. So the, I think that it is compatible as proposed with the neighboring properties. I think, you know, eventually, all these properties at some point are going to be either washed away or elevated. So I think that ultimately, they're all going to be very similar. Extender of the proposed increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure. The proposed building is located on the existing footprint, which is not in compliance with current zoning, because its current zoning is R40, and the, and our lot has about 8,000 square feet. The, we've made the structure really no more non-conforming than it currently is, although we are increasing the living area, which is, as you know, considered an increase or an intensification of the non-conforming nature of the structure. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties around the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and stormwater runoff. We do have an existing order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, and the, and again, with all due respect to Randy, that means they have considered the impact of this structure on wetlands and on groundwater, water bodies and stormwater runoff. And so it's a level lot. We don't think drainage is going to be a problem, but it's something that was considered by the Conservation Commission when they approved the water conditions in this project. Impact of scale, size, and mass on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. The proposed ridge of 35.3 feet is a little less than 13 feet over the existing ridge. Now, I think you have to remember that the, because the building is in the floodplain, the first floor has to be one foot above the floodplain, which in this instance is 14, we're showing as 14.3 feet. The building itself, from the first floor to the ridge, is 21 feet. So the, and that's, and that's how you get to 35 feet. I mean, the house is going up eight feet above the ground, but there's a, we're really measuring from sea level, so you have to add the six feet of elevation of the ground level, and that's how you get to 35 feet. So I think a structure that's 21 feet tall is not a particularly tall structure, and we're required to be up at 14 feet, you know, because of the floodplain. And, you know, many of the houses around us are, have been elevated. 191 Morris Island, 181 Morris Island Road. You've approved many. I think the one on Scallop Terrace has clearly been part of this project, 47 Little Beach Road, currently under construction, if you drove in there. And, you know, many of the lots over on the Seagull Lane and Little Beach roadside. The method of sewer disposal, this will require the installation of a new septic system, and due to the level nature of the property, we don't think drainage is an issue. Impact on traffic flow and safety, you know, this, you know, we think there'll be a positive impact, because we're now have a garage, so that at least one car will be able to park off the street. We are adding a parking tab on the south side, where two cars could park as well. So we think that that's going to be an improvement over the current situation. The extent of lateral expansion proposed, and the extent to which lateral expansion impacts the impervious areas of the site. There's no significant lateral expansion, therefore, we do not believe there's any impact on the impervious areas of the site. The, I think that what we'd like to convey to you is that we believe that, given the nature of the floodplain, the standard cape design with dormers, which is very much in keeping with the neighborhood character, you know, this building as proposed is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience, either here on Microsoft Teams, that would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate now.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor.
I'll read the correspondence. First of all, we have a note from Michelle Clark. She writes on May 10th. The applicant was before the Historical Commission on May 3rd, proposing a full demolition, demolition of the existing structure. The commission determined that the structure is not historically significant, and therefore did not impose a demolition delay. Then we have a note, this is from Catherine Halpern. She's the chair of the.
Planning Board.
She writes on August 11th. The planning board at their August 8 meeting reviewed the ZBA's request for comment. After review of this request, the board voted 7 zip zip to send a positive recommendation, with the condition that the driveway shall be constructed of a permeable material, and shall be constructed in a manner, manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water. In addition, the planning board recommends a reduction of the curb returns on the proposed shell drive, and a reduction of the width on the reconfigured pole off to the south to 16 feet. Judith Giorgio, Health Agent, writes on 8/23. I reviewed the demolish and rebuild plan. The plan does not appear to add any septic flow to the property, and existing floor plan is required for review. Detailed site plans showing offset to the existing septic will be required prior to approval for a building permit. Then we have a note from Nicole Smith. She is a conservation agent for the town. On August 22nd, she writes, 37 Clamshell was approved for an order of conditions to be reviewed for, at the September 7th work session. The commission wanted to make sure there would be no serious changes to the site plan after the ZBA hearing before issuing. Then we have a note, this is from Peter W. McConnell. He's at 191 Morris Island Road. He writes on August 24th, the revised building plans for 37 dated June 22nd have addressed our major concerns. The dwelling remains on its original footprint. The mechanicals have been moved farther, further from our property. The cupola has been removed. Dormers have replaced the sheer three-story walls, and the catwalk has been reduced. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Then we have a note from Charles and Ann Shuey. Their address is 32 Clamshell. They write on August 24th. We're writing with regard to the application to demolish existing cottage and erecting a three-story residence on that footprint. My wife and I have owned our beach house at 32 for over 40 years. We have been witness to many changes in property ownership over these decades, and have seen property improvements consistent with our quote-unquote Horn cottages community. In recent years, however, we have seen a number of cottages torn down and raised to two and three-level structures along Little Beach Road and Oyster and Lobster Drives. We believe that the ambience of the quote-unquote cottage community has been diminished by these reconstructions, and further raising of existing structures will compromise that feeling even more. I've been proud to live in this area of Horn's cottages. We're very concerned about these environmental directions and the impact they have on the pleasure we receive living in this area. Five years ago, Ann and I spent a considerable sum to attach a roof deck above the first floor of cottage. We love watching the sunset and enjoying our vista with friends and relatives. It is and has been a major part of our summer lifestyle. The raising of the structure in this application will reduce the amount of sunset we see considerably and reduce the quote-unquote lifestyle value of our property. The plans do not convey how high the proposed structure will be, since the plans don't convey how low slash close to the road level the foundation plane will be laid. However, a second story will cause us to lose at least eight feet distance to watching the sun go down. We also realize that the new structure will give us a feeling of living and a cavern, since the structure will dwarf our lower sitting cottage. Thank you for your consideration. That's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone here on Microsoft Teams that would like to enter the meeting and speak?
I see no one that wishes to speak.
Okay, we'll have questions from the board. Let's start with Dave Vich.
Okay, well, I had the opportunity, because I sometimes save files, the opportunity to look at the previous proposal. And, and they have made some significant changes to the look of it in, in what was asked by us and, and neighbors, and I think they made some great improvements in that respect. So, but I do have some questions, and I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure about my feelings on this and, and the zoning parts of it, but I have questions, and I don't know who to direct these questions to. The first would be with respect to, there's, there's a proposed eight-foot by 11-foot four-inch second-floor balcony that's drawn on the second floor coming off of one of the bedrooms, that has no apparent means of support. So I'm going to, I would assume in that case that it's a cantilever deck.
The builder is here, Donnie Dunham, if you want to come up, Donnie, explain.
So that would be, that's who I want to talk with, I guess.
I'm Donnie Dunham of DeMartin Dunham Builders. I think I can answer your question, David. So you, you're spot on in that it's cantilevered back into the house, so that supports the deck.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I, I mean, in this, I don't know. I'm, honestly, so to tell you, and this is not a zoning issue for me, but honestly, when I look at that, it, it, it doesn't look, I, I wouldn't want to spend much time on that deck, to be honest with you. And, and I also think, I also think that, I mean, just my own observation is that second-floor decks tend to not get used very much from I, when I see around town. So, you know, it, to me, it doesn't look, it, it, it doesn't look very comforting, or it doesn't, just kind of doesn't look right. But that's, again, not, that's not necessarily a zoning issue. It can become a zoning issue in that that balcony, it projects further into the setback. So we're going from the building, the corner of the building, we've got 15.6 feet proposed, whereas that balcony is, it takes the setback down to 7.8 feet. So that's an increase in the non-conforming nature of, of the setback. So I'm not sure, honestly, I, I think I prefer to say, I, I think, all, honestly, I think everyone would be well-served. be well-served if the size of that were reduced, certainly in width. Eight feet, I don't see why you need it to be eight feet wide. But that's, I think everybody would be better off if that were the case.
Well, I can tell you that we'd be happy to reduce it to five feet.
That could work for me.
All right, thank you.
And then, so the other thing that I would, and the other thing I just want to double-check with you on. So I noticed that in changing the appearance, that you've stepped the dormer end walls back a foot from the original proposal and a foot from the, on the gable end. And so, but then I also see that you've added, it looks like about a foot of overhang on the gable ends for the, at least the 12-pitch roof. And so I just want to confirm that that's your proposal in order to show a little more roof along that, along those sides to help.
It's purely for an aesthetic, yes. Yep.
Yeah, because I mean, and I've looked around, I've been looking around, studying this somewhat, and you know, when you're, when you're, when you're basically changing to appear to be what's, depending on how you look at it, could be almost a two-story house, but it appears to be a one-and-a-half-story house. And if it's done well, it really, it reads well and you don't see it. But if it's not done right, it stands out. So it looks like you've made improvements that would achieve that, so thanks. I think those are the only questions I have, Dave.
Once again, Sarah. B-size drawn 11 by 17. Is that what was submitted?
Yes.
Thank you. No more questions.
Randy?
No questions.
Paul?
No questions.
Dave T.
Dave Thompson, no questions.
Okay, well, I'm confused, okay?
I hate it when that happens.
I'm standing in the street and I'm looking up at the new structure. And maybe there's a question for you, Dave Clark. How many feet is it from the road to the new ridge?
I can answer that question, Dave, because if you...
Your name isn't Dave Clark.
I know, but I...
I believe the road is somewhere around elevation five. I don't know if we have spot elevations on the plan out in the road, but so the road is slightly lower than the adjacent grade to the existing building. So we're showing 30 feet from the adjacent grade to the ridge, so it'll be just a little bit more than 30 feet from the street level to the ridge.
So Mr. Riley, in your explanation here, you say the proposed ridge is 35.3. How can it be 35.3? And Mr. Clark's telling me it's 30, a number less than that.
Because the 35.3 is measured from sea level, not from, so you have to add the six feet of the ground above sea level to get to 35 feet.
Can I say something? Do you mind if I, yeah, do you mind if I speak? I'm sorry.
Why don't you let David answer that question?
Yeah, so we, we show, I think, the lowest adjacent grade at 6.0. And as Bill said, that that's six feet above mean sea level. And we're showing the ridge at 35.3. So it's just under, just under 30 feet from lowest adjacent grade to the ridge.
So in other words, David, the 35.3 feet we're showing as the ridge height, that's the distance above mean sea level?
I'm not sure he realizes that's a question to him. He thinks you're talking to David Nixon, I think.
I think he, I think I was. Yes, I mean, we're showing the ridge elevation as we've shown it for the last 20 years in relationship to the ground elevations, which are all based upon mean sea level, the vertical datum of 1988. When we do traditional height calculations on properties that aren't in the floodplain, we do it based upon average grade. An average grade is listed as an average grade above sea level. So that's the datum we've always used. So 35.3 feet shown as the ridge elevation is not 35 feet from the adjacent grade, it's 35.3 feet from mean sea level.
And what is the height of the current structure?
It's on the plan, it's showing a 22.9 feet current ridge.
Yep.
So, so the way the math works, David, the first floor has to go up...
Twelve and a half feet, Bill.
Pardon?
You're going up 12 and a half feet, 12.4 if you want to be precise.
Okay, now I'm, if I could have done math, I would have been a doctor.
Probably not.
But the, in other words...
Okay, so you're telling me, Buck, as you seem to know, it's going up...
12.4.
From what I look at now when I stand in the street?
Correct.
Dave, also just to, because I did some math on this. So yes, the ridge is proposed to go up 12.4 feet from the existing ridge. And that's what, if you can imagine looking at the existing ridge, see 12.4 feet. The first floor elevation is going up 5.6 feet. That's what it has to go up from what it is right now, from what it is now is 8.7 feet. It needs to go up to 14, or they put it at 14.3 to meet the...
So it's a foot over the 13.
Yes.
I see.
So there is somewhat of, so the first floor is going up 5.6 feet. The ridge is going up 12.4 feet. That's a 6.8-foot difference. In other words, if you took the same house, it would, it would go up, it's going up 6.8 feet higher than the ridge of the, as if you picked the same house in order to create this second floor.
Right, in other, in other words, the house itself remains very modest, but because, because the first floor has to go up six feet, you know, that's how you get to 35.9 feet or whatever, whatever Dave says. So the structure itself remains very modest. It's just, it's the FEMA regulations that require us to come up to that height. And as I say, there's a house on, on Skallop Terrace that if you stood in, if you stood in the street and looked, instead of looking at the house, you looked to the left, I mean, it's very obvious. I mean, I, you know, I didn't have, I didn't bother going looking at the plans, but it's clearly a two-story building with dormers, step back, exactly the same design that we have here. In fact, you know, the, both 191 and 181 have a very similar design where they have dormers that are step back. In fact, I asked, I took a picture and Sarah said she could put it up for me.
Well, when you say it has to go up because of FEMA regulations, Buck, you don't have to put on a second story. That's got nothing to do with FEMA.
That's correct. But the point is that the second, there is still a modest, in other words, they're not doing nine-foot ceilings.
Dave, just with Buck on the plans issue, if I could just make a comment, would that be appropriate?
Okay, if I could, can I just point out one thing? If you look at this picture, that's the, that's the building on Clamshell, pardon me, Skallop Terrace that's being rebuilt now.
What were you gonna say, Dave?
So Buck, I understand your frustration and I share it to a certain extent. On the other hand, I'd just like to say that I kind of appreciate having plans that I can, when I'm out, certainly when I'm out in the field and the wind is blowing, which it always is on Cape Cod. I appreciate having a smaller set scale of plans. And I'm, you know, maybe what we would like to do is get both or something, but I can think of the past, you know, hold 24 by 36 plans, and Rick Roy used to do this all the time, send us big plans. I'm kind of appreciating having smaller ones, but I do understand it, you can't, it's hard to read the dimensions and hard to understand everything that's going on.
If I could make a suggestion in that regard, because I share Buck's frustration, because I'm old, older than Buck even, the... Maybe not. Anyway, the, I look older than Buck, that's for sure. Anyway, so perhaps as a part of your rules, you could say that, you know, the plan should be 11 by 17 and no more than one floor or two, no, two floor plans per 11 by 17. So it's great that you have, you know, you got four on this plan, but if you had just two, the numbers would be bigger, it'd be easier to read. It's just a recommendation, if you want to help Buck out.
Okay, Paul, I think we need a motion to go into deliberations, please.
I will move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds.
Need a vote, Buck?
Buck approves.
Paul votes yes.
Dave T.
Dave Thompson, yes.
And Dave Veach votes yes.
And I do too. Okay, deliberations.
I'm sorry. Once again, I get excited about the blueprints and I, but we'll let that aside for right now. I don't particularly, I would like to see the setbacks stay where they are. The fact that they want to increase the ridge 12 and a half feet, which is to the maximum, and they have a small lot. I believe you said 8,000, Bill, but I think you meant 6,000 or percent, closer to 5,700. It's a very small lot. And three feet, and there's a little bit of, we'll say, fudging here on the setback from the street. Sometimes it says 3.7 and other times it says four. But I think, I think if we go back to the original setbacks, that would be a start. However, if you do that, then maybe the house isn't going to be as easy on the eye. There's a, there's a problem with a small lot. That's...
Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first of all, in my own defense, we still don't have to go by whether or not the Conservation Commission says that the suitability of the site is appropriate. We make our own de novo review on that, right? So I don't think you should say that I shouldn't have said that because in the other property...
I didn't say you shouldn't have said that. What I, what I said was that they have considered those issues.
Okay, but we get a different, we get another consideration. So we don't have, we're not bound by the conservation opinion on the suitability of the site for the project. Just can you, am I wrong about that? I mean, I want to know.
No, you're absolutely right.
Okay, that's, I just want to know. I want to just be clear.
Yeah.
All right, great. So all that being said, I agree with Buck and what he said, and I also think that that second-floor part would make it inappropriate for the neighborhood. I don't think it would look nice there. The other house that you were talking about is, is not even in that particular little neighborhood.
It's visible from the...
It's visible, but it's not like, that's like a tiny little neighborhood there.
The two houses between this street and Morris Island, between this house and Morris Island Road, both have identical designs. They're second stories, they're dormer, the dormers are set back.
But it's still not right in that little community. So I just think that second-floor part wouldn't look nice. So I'm not voting anyway, so.
Paul?
Well, I, I tend to agree that this issue with respect to the height and so forth has been addressed in other locations, and we've been trying to adapt to that. And I think that adaptation could continue here. So I'm not so concerned about it. I think that this could work with the suggestion of the reduction in the balcony to five feet. So I think I'll vote in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. I think this is a very nice rendition of a home that would look nice anywhere. I agree with Paul on the balcony. It's just, sticks out there. I personally can't go up on first step on a stepladder. That is just, that is just beyond me. It just doesn't look, it looks out of place. I'm, I'm okay with this in the neighborhood. I'm going to vote for it.
Dave Veach.
Well, I think that, I think I indicated before, I think they've done a good job of fitting the house into the neighborhood, at least with respect to the neighborhood as it's changing, as we've seen it change. And, and, you know, I spent some time the other day, just, I went down there on my bicycle since it's close by, and, you know, I kind of spent some time riding around and looking around and looking at the houses that we've approved that, you know, being cottages raised up and similar. And I, and I think we can, you can make the argument that this is similar to several of the other ones that have been, that have been done that we've approved over on Lobster Lane in that area, including the one that was shown in the photo just recently that Bill was pointing out. And so I, you know, they didn't, and they didn't need to really reduce the interior features much, and that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. I think, I think they've, what they've proposed with the overhangs and the type of overhangs they've proposed, it's, it's one of those story and a half houses that's, you know, it's, the appearance, honestly, comes down to the setbacks or step backs of the dormers. And that's a very, you know, it's a, you know, having that roof come down next to the dormers that they're showing, maybe about almost a couple feet of roof down gives the appearance that there's, that it's stepped back. And it is stepped back a foot, basically. And then along the gate, along the sidewalls, when they, when they continue, the roof, you can see the walls are in the same plane, both first and second floors, but by continuing, we used to call them jet blocks, the roof, and you, you actually build a roof along the side of the dormer so that it, the visual appearance is that it breaks it up, it breaks up the wall, even though the walls are in the same plane. So they've, they've shown doing all of that in a way that I think will fit in with the neighborhood. I can see examples of it in the neighborhood as a matter of, same kind of thing, same kind of treatments. And so, you know, we're, you can also, I can also look at it another way and say, wow, you know, these little cottages and there's still some here and there and everything. But I, I'm not, as we, as in the past, I'm inclined to favor the property owners who are undertaking, meeting the FEMA requirements. And then as part of meeting those FEMA requirements, taking the opportunity, again, with our approval to increase the size of the house by adding a floor or whatever. And if it's being done in a way that seems to work, which in my mind this does, then I don't feel it's substantially more detrimental in the neighborhood, and I will support it.
Boy, I just, you know, an extra 12 feet. And I understand where part of it's coming from, FEMA, but the other part is coming by... by adding a second, second story.
Dave, could I mention something?
Not, until I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you. I just think it's, you know, we've talked earlier about changing the nature of neighborhoods and they, well, they have to do it. Well, they don't have to do it. They have to do something. Yeah, yeah. They don't have to do it. That, I'm not convinced that we're doing the neighborhood a favor by allowing it. Now, you walk around Little Beach and you see that structure that was part of Mr. Riley's clients.
Yeah, 46, 46 Little Beach Road.
Oh, I mean, that, that concrete wall that's been built and the huge house that's on there, it just makes me think, you know, you made a mistake, talking to myself, you made a mistake by allowing that. You did. And I don't usually think that, but once in a while, there's something that hits me, that's a huge mistake. And I'm just afraid that the visual of this house compared to the others right around it, and I'm not talking about the one on Lobster Lane or Oyster and all that, but around there, it's out of sync with that part of the neighborhood. And I think it would be seriously detrimental to the neighborhood. I really do.
I'll move to approve the application as submitted, with the condition that the balcony be reduced to five feet. And I'm assuming that the standard conditions with respect to construction in this particular area are definitely required. Is that correct?
Yeah. But I'd like to get a straw vote, because I don't know how Buck's voting here.
I'll get to that.
So if, if we move to approve, it would be with the reduction of the balcony to the five feet, and then the standard conditions, all construction activity to be contained on-site, and construction vehicles to be contained on-site or off-site with the permission of the property owner. Between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed, no work will be permitted on weekends, and construction activity would be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Dave Veech seconds.
Okay, before we take a vote on that, Mr. Riley would like a straw vote, and that's a reasonable request. Those that feel they can support this and would in a vote, please raise your hand. I'm sorry, Buck, was your hand up?
I don't think so.
Okay, good. Those who feel that they could not support this, please raise your hand.
The, I'd like to request a continuance.
It would be October 27th, because we just put number six on the 13th.
Sure.
Paul?
I will move to approve the request for continuance to October 27th, 2022.
Dave Veech seconds.
All right, we need a vote on that. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
Dave T?
Dave Thompson, yes.
Dave Veech votes yes.
And I vote yes. That's a unanimous vote. Okay. All right, Sarah, let's go on to, I'll get my little C here. That's 22-071, please.
Application number 22-071, Daniel and Catherine Ward, care of William F. Riley, Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 170 Main Street, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 17C, Block 19, Lot 33. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of additions and the installation of a new foundation. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 14.2 feet from the road within the Coastal Conservancy District, floodplain elevation 15. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming in that it will be located 13.5 feet from the road where a 25-foot setback is required, and within the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,370 square feet, 32 percent, and the proposed building coverage is 1,455 square feet, 34 percent, where 15 percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 4,280 square feet of buildable upland and contains 13,707 square feet of land area, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the protective bylaw.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of Daniel and Catherine Ward. The, this is a project where they want to try to make the space a little more modern, livable, and after consulting with Rick Roy and his design team, they felt that the adding four feet to the width of the building would provide them with the space they need. That's 85 square feet of building coverage in the, and that would, they'd be putting dormers on the backside so they have full height windows looking out of the ocean. The, there'd be a new septic system, because the existing septic system's in the floodplain. None of the Board of Health regulations, the top of the, the top of the septic system has to be one foot above the floodplain. So that requires a substantial retaining wall, which you can see on the site plan, to hold the septic system, the, and the septic system to prevent breakout, and there's got to be 10 feet in front of the wall. So that, that explains the width of the wall. That also has a coinkydink, as Popeye would say, that moves the house out of the floodplain since the, so I think the principal benefit of this is that the, the house is going to be lifted up a couple of feet, so it's level with Main Street. Right now, it's down a couple of feet. And so that, you know, this beautiful home, which we still, we still haven't been, unfortunately, we had a filing issue with the Historical Commission, but we believe that this building that's been here for well over 100 years will continue to look majestic on Main Street because the front facade is not changing at all. The, so I think that if we run through the criteria, adequacy of the size of the site in terms of the size of the proposed use, we believe it is adequate, because they primarily consist of adding a four-foot addition to the rear of the building. Now, the proposed building coverage of 1,207 square feet is only 85 square feet more than the existing structure. Now, the existing building did not meet the front setback, but it does meet the sideline setbacks. While the buildable upland is only 4,280 square feet, the full lot area is 13,707 square feet. So the proposed project is just a little over 10 percent of the gross area, although it is 34 percent of the buildable upland. The applicant believes that adding 85 square feet is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. Although there are quite a few properties in this neighborhood that have been revised, we believe that simply adding four feet to the rear of the structure will still leave it compatible with neighboring properties. And again, I have a third page that shows the net areas of the neighboring properties. Existing structure is non-conforming from street setback, exceeds the maximum height allowed of 30 feet. The applicant proposes to increase the ridge height by a foot, because the structure's going to be elevated.
Yes, I know.
So it's level with Main Street. The addition of the four-foot expansion, the new dormers in the rear of the building will increase living area, which is considered an increase in nonconformity. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties around the natural environments, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and stormwater runoff. The applicant believes the site is suitable for the proposed work, because although there is a steep slope at the rear of the building, any drainage, should there be any, will be contained on its own lot. Also, the construction of the septic systems retained inside a, supposed to be inside a wall, will create a level space that will reduce the risk of runoff. Impact of scale, setting, and mass on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. Other than the two minor changes, elevating the structure by a total of two feet, adding small additions to the rear wall, will have no impact on the neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. There will be new, larger windows on the water side of the property, but that is all. The applicant believes that these proposed changes are not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure. Compatibility of proposed use, it's a single-family residence, it's going to continue to be one, and it's a, all the neighboring uses are also single-family residences. Method of sewer disposal, source of water and drainage, there will be a new septic system installed on the property, they'll be compliant with current Board of Health regulations. Property has public water, and all drains will be contained within the lot. Impact on traffic flow and safety, we don't believe there will be any negative impact on traffic flow and safety. In addition to rebuilding the driveway, we're also putting a parking pad off of Andrew Harding's Lane, so that vehicles, particularly when they're bringing the groceries home from the store, be able to pull off the, completely off the road to unload the vehicle. The applicant believes there'd be no increase in noise of litter due to this change. All public utilities and services to the property are adequate, and because the septic system's got to be constructed on ground that's elevated over the floodplain, the rear of the building is no longer in the floodplain, and Question 12 is no longer applicable. So that'd be our presentation.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the Microsoft Teams world that would like to speak in favor of this?
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor.
Okay, the correspondence. This is a note from Jay Briggs. He is the Building Commissioner for the town on 8/22. I've reviewed the proposed plans and documents. I see no floodplain issues as the lowest floor complies with FEMA elevation requirements. As proposed, the dwelling will just meet the 30-foot maximum allowed building height. I have no issues with the project. Then we have a note from Nicole Smith. She's our...
Conservation agent.
Conservation agent, right. She writes on the 23rd, 170 Main Street has been approved. To issue an order of conditions, the order is set to be approved on September 7th. Then Judith Giorgio writes on 8/23, that on July 18th, the Board of Health approved with variances the proposed septic plan for this property. The approval is based upon the plan for you for additions and foundation. I have no concerns. Then we have a note, this is from Michelle Clark. She writes on August 8th, 170 Main Street will be included on the 9/6/2022 Historical Commission agenda. I will report back after that meeting. Thank you, Michelle. And that's the end of the correspondence. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to either speak against or has a specific question? Please indicate on the screen you'd like to be included.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition has a specific question.
Okay. Questions from the board, Randy?
I have no questions.
Paul?
I'm trying to get a feel for what the view of this is looking like from the Andrew Harding Lane side. We've got a retaining wall, which looks to me to be about 10 feet.
Right, that's correct.
So what is that going to look like from, are we just looking at a concrete wall?
I wasn't part of that presentation. Typically, what they do is they do a fieldstone facade. Rick Roy's here, maybe he can help us with that.
Yeah, Rick, can you answer that question, please?
Yeah, the other thing that you have to remember is the mitigation planting, okay, that's going to have to take place, which is all taking place down in front of that retaining wall, besides the fact that it, it will be decorative with stone, all right? You're also going to be planting plants that are going to grow tall enough to take some of the, the sting out of the height of that wall.
Yeah, if you want to look at the site plan, the mitigation planting that he's talking about, the entire area...
I see the Rosa Regosa in there?
No, no, this, they have a very extensive...
Yeah.
Planting plan, or expensive planting plan as well. So that, where the words "buildable upland" appears, the entire area between the retaining wall and the driveway is going to be completely planted with native, native plants. I think they're actually taking the Rosa Regosa out, because it's not a native plant. And the, the vegetation is going to be plant, placed there, is going to be five or six feet tall. So I think that, but, I mean, there's really not much we can do about it. I mean, it's a requirement of the Board of Health. And the alternative to the wall would be to take the fill and run it out, so it meets the proper angle of repose, which would require filling in the floodplain. So that's why they use walls rather than spreading the fill out.
So it's the better of two evils, is what it amounts to?
Well, you know, the, depends, I don't mind filling in the floodplain, as you know. So, so if you have a nice planted slope, I mean, you know, go sledding in the wintertime, you know. Anyway, yeah, that's, that's why we're stuck with that wall, though.
All right. That's the only questions I had.
Dave?
I have no questions for Mr. Riley.
Dave Veech?
Well, this is not a zoning question, but I, I just would say that to Rick, I think, looking at all of those openings on the northeast side, I'm sure you're going to be choosing those based on, thinking about when northeast storms come roaring, roaring in there, because it can be very harsh wind conditions on that side of the house. So that's all I have to comment.
Buck?
I know we're in questions, but I would, I would say that I'm a little upset that we really don't have the final paperwork from Conservation. Everybody's talking, but I, sometimes I've heard attorneys say, get it in writing. And so we're, we're, we're starting to get applications before the other regulatory commissions have issued written conditions. And I find that as a reason to say no to something. I'm just, I'm just making a comment right at the moment. So anyways, I do have a question. I'm looking at the retaining wall, and I'm going, "Okay, that's a good idea." What—can you make a retaining wall 50 feet from the septic apparatus? In other words, is there—is—can you just use that to put in a retaining wall half-well anywhere you want?
No, but Dave—
What's the story there?
Dave Clog explained to me that the—because—
I'm here, Bill.
Okay, Dave, go ahead. Lay it on him.
Buck's question has come up before, and I think Jay Briggs had questioned at one time whether the wall—the extent of the wall was necessary, and conservation asked the same question. The Title V says that you need a clear distance—well, I'm sorry, back up. It doesn't say shall, it says should. So that's a huge difference in the regulation, but it's—the wall should be 10 feet from the edge of the leaching system. And in the past, we have gone as low as five feet. And so the most we could gain here would be about five feet. The reason we left it at 10 is because it is a 10-foot-high wall, I'm expecting when the structural engineer does his design or her design, that footing on the inside of the wall, because it's a cantilevered wall, is going to be about eight feet. So you cannot have any portion of the leach field over an impervious surface like a footing. So once the structural design comes back, I will move the wall in as much as I think we can, but it's only going to be two feet tops.
Good answer. The second part of that is, on the southern property line, where you have this retaining wall, the southern section, there's a break where apparently you have walking steps coming to a break in the retaining wall, and then you go on a little platform, and then you have some steps going down to the six-foot or eight-foot elevation. That segment to the left of that break, how do you—how do you—how do you say that's part of the septic system versus—it's just—you're—you're certainly 24 feet from the septic, aren't you?
We are, but we have the septic tank over on that side, too. So to maintain the gravity to the system, we need the wall in approximate that location. Could we bring it in a few feet? I guess we could. I haven't really looked at it, but we're maintaining a separation, I believe, of five feet from the wall to the—might be a little more than that—to the the gravity septic line from the distribution box to the leach field. But is there—can we save some wall there? Not a significant amount.
I'd like to add, Dave, that at that point, the wall is quite a bit shorter because the grade is coming up significantly.
Yeah, so the—at the—at the southern end of the wall, it meets existing grade. So where you see that platform, I think it's only two feet high there, or maybe three feet high.
Yep. All right. So where does the—where does the conservancy district change to now that you have that retaining wall in at 15-8?
That'd be an answer question for Jay.
I mean, the top of the bank isn't where—it's on the print, there's the top of the bank, but it's obviously not the top of the bank because that whole fill in there is at 16 feet.
Well, but Dave, right—yeah, Dave has to show the top of the bank as it exists. You can't—
Well, I mean, there's one thing in the bylaw that says you can fill in the floodplain. Areas that are filled, that are allowed to be filled under the certain provisions in the bylaw, doesn't change the buildable upland of the lot, because I think it's pretty clear in the definition of buildable upland that you can't count areas that are filled. But that's just my memory, but that's a good question for Jay, how he would rule on that.
All right. Well, then we'll go to the retaining wall north of the house, where you have the filled grade of 17.1 at the base of the steps, I guess. That retaining wall would be in the conservancy district, correct?
Yeah. All—the entire length of the wall is in the conservancy district, except maybe the last foot or two on the north side.
But a lot of—a lot of those retaining walls is there for the—because of the septic system. I'm not sure that the retaining wall on the north side of the house and to the west of what appears to be a drive-in, but I might have that wrong, that's not there for the septic system, is it?
It is not. The wall you were just pointing to, and it's circled in red from what I see on the screen, is outside the conservancy district. So the yellow line you have on the plan is the top of bank, limited to coastal conservancy district.
Sarah, can you expand whoever—that Buck's point?
I'm looking at mine. David's looking at it, too.
Yeah, can you expand that?
Good eyes.
You can't make that the main picture?
Big brother's always watching, Buck.
What? He doesn't like the question?
There you go.
X.
No, so—the yellow line you show on the—that you have highlighted on your plan is the limits of the conservancy district. So that retaining wall and stairs that are proposed to get that new parking spot—to get from that new parking spot up to the first-floor level is outside the conservancy district.
Oh, I—that's why I was asking, where are the conservancy district? I thought the conservancy district was 50-foot landward of the top of the coastal bank.
No, that's the—that's the setback requirement for structures.
Hmm. The no-disturb zone for conservation is 50 feet from the top of the bank, right?
And that is also the setback for structures under the zoning bylaw.
All right. I'm not—I'm not going back to conservation, so it doesn't matter, but I thought that was in the conservancy district.
You know, if I could just make a comment about the fact that, you know, for many years, Conservation Commission has made—has heard issues but not issued an order of conditions until after this board, this august body has acted. And so what they reported to you was they've considered this, and they're going to actually write and issue the order of conditions on September 6. So, I mean, I think that's a continuation of the way it's always been. You just—you made it sound like it's something new, so I didn't—
I could be wrong, but I'm not sure—I like that wall there, but that's neither here nor there, I guess. I'm done.
Okay. I think everyone's asked their questions. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave V. seconds.
Need a vote?
Buck votes yes.
Paul? Paul votes yes.
Dave Thompson, yes.
Dave V. votes yes.
And I vote yes, too. Deliberations. Let's start with Dave Thompson.
Thank you very much. It seems like everything is going to be taking place on the ocean side, pretty much. It's a nice old house that was built 1850, I think.
Right, that's correct.
It's part of the old village. It's historic. They're doing nothing to—I—it—they're—they're doing nothing in the front of the house. I am in favor of this. I'm in favor of this. I can't do much—
Dave V.
Yeah, I—this is certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think it's an improvement. I think it looks great, a perfect fit for the—for the site, as far as I can see. And so it meets all of our criteria, and I will support it.
Buck.
Well, as long as David Clark is going to work with the structural engineer and bring it in, is what he's—what he said, I'm not going to beat a dead horse. I'll let it go.
Randy?
If I were voting, I would support it. I think it's an improvement.
Paul?
I think it clearly meets our criteria, and it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so I'll be supporting it.
Yeah, and likewise, I'm going to support it. I think it's a great project, a wonderful house, and everything they want to do makes sense.
So I guess the question would be conditions, and—
I don't think we need them. The backyard, as you can tell, is very large, capable of getting all the vehicles off. All the work's going to be occurring on the backside of the building. I'm sure Rick will tell us by next June, they'll be working inside, right, Rick?
If all works out, yes.
But, I mean, but the bulk of the outside work will be finished, so I don't think we have to have that condition. Although if you want to say from June 30th to Labor Day, no work on weekends, no work before 8:00, no work after 5:00, we don't have a problem with that.
And are you saying that the exterior construction would already be done? Is that—
Well, it would—God willing, and the creek don't rise. So it'll be—even if it's not—it's not completely finished, it'll be substantially finished, and I don't think you need the condition. You know, stop—a stop a project right in the middle of the thing, so—
All right. I didn't see a creek reflected on the plan, so I'll go on that basis.
Well, it is in the floodplain.
So I will move to approve the application as submitted with the condition that between June 30th and Labor Day, no work will be permitted on weekends, and the construction activity would be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Dave V. seconds.
Before we vote, Buck, did you have a comment?
That's fine.
Oh, okay.
I vote yes.
Paul?
I'll vote yes.
Dave Thompson, yes.
Dave V. votes yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
You won one field. Christ.
Okay, Sarah, 22-073.
Application number 22-073, The Glenview Trust Company, care of Michael D. Ford Esquire, P.O. Box 485, West Harwich, Mass. 02671. Owner of property located at 40 Gammy's Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's map, 15B Block 7, Lot 4A. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling and a nonconforming lot via the partial demolition of the existing dwelling and garage, and the construction of an addition and garage. Also proposed is the expansion of the existing driveway as allowed by special permit under Section 4A 3D of the protective bylaw. The existing dwelling is nonconforming in that it is located within the coastal conservancy district, floodplain elevation 12, and 22.5 feet from the westerly of butter. The proposed addition will be nonconforming in that it will be located within the coastal conservancy district where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 3,121 square feet, 27.5%, and the proposed building coverage is 3,386 square feet, 29.8%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and that it contains 11,000 square feet of buildable upland, 11,350 square feet of buildable upland, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Sections 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Ford.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Mike Ford, representing the applicant. With me is Mike Terranella from Ahern Architects. And on the screen is Sean Riley, Coastal Engineering. This is a project where the applicant seeks to make some improvements to the existing house, consisting of a removal of the existing garage on the end of the house, a construction of a—an addition and a garage as part of that addition with some living area up above. There is a expansion of the footprint, and Sean, maybe you could put up your plan that you have—a colored plan that we have that's illustrative, that might be easier to speak from, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And Sarah, I will provide you with a copy of it, because I know under the open meeting law, if we show something, you're supposed to have it. I just dropped that plan, by the way, that I referred to in the last hearing.
Does Sean know he—
Yes.
Is on?
He's—he's on mute, but he's looking for the plan, I think.
I think he's talking, but not to us.
Sean, you're muted. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Fine. Okay, sorry about that. I was just looking for the—
The chair just wants to make sure you're bringing that plan up.
Yes, yes, I am. Just give me one minute.
That has nothing to do with the fact we're at the last hearing of the day, Sean.
No, I know. I know, Mike. There we go. Let me just share my screen. There we go. All right, so we'll start—you want to start with the stuff we're removing first, Mike, and then go into the—or we could start with the proposal first.
Yeah, the proposal would be great. So what I wanted to show the board was the area where the footprint of the existing structure is being increased. And you can see it's along the left-hand side there, the eastly side of the house, and there's a small section on the right-hand side, about 40 square feet over there. It's a total of 265 square feet addition. And I asked him to put it on this plan because when we get to finding number 12, I'll ask him to bring it back up, because the area of the addition is substantially in the floodplain, and we need to address that—that last section of the lateral expansion within the floodplain. So we'll get back to that plan, Sean, when we get there. So—
Sounds good.
—what I'd like to do at this point, Mr. Chairman, briefly, is to have Mike just walk you through the elevation of this addition that is proposed, so you can kind—now that you've looked at it on the site and see where the change is. And I don't know whether—Sarah, you have the elevations you could bring up? Mike, you want to?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Tartarella, Patrick Ahern Architect. Unfortunately, these aren't in color. However, what we're proposing is, again, the removal of—the current garage that is side-facing here with a one-story roof on it. The proposed garage—which I have information on the plans in front of me—proposes a new half-story above that garage with an increase in—with an increase in ridge height of approximately six feet from the current garage that's there today. If we could advance to the next slide, showing the side elevations. So the house that you see in the back here was renovated in the late '90s. The existing wing that currently is on the house that we're preparing to remove from here back wasn't touched in the '90s. Basically, the garage that we're creating now is a one-and-a-half-story element on on this west elevation with a one-story element on—with a dormer on the east elevation, but it's compatible with the existing house, and the ridge height sits below the existing ridge. We've set the dormers into the roof on this elevation, and if we could go to the east elevation. And on the east elevation—keep going. That's the—so in on this elevation, we have a one-story plate height with a shed dormer cut into the roof on the second story, all of which we think is consistent with the existing architecture in the carriage house, as reads as something that could have been detached at one time that was attached. And I think, as you saw with the footprint, there's a minor expansion going to on the floodplain side, and then on the opposite side, there's a—there's a modest expansion in the footprint towards the north.
And Mr. Chairman, Mike, will be available for questions, to the extent the board has some, when we get there. So let me go through the— So let me go through the criteria. Adequacy of size of the site, including but not limited maximum lot or building coverage setbacks. We're in an R40 zone. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, because it has portions, even though the lot is 44,000, in the coastal conservancy district and within the 50-foot setback to the coastal conservancy district. The Westerly side yard is at 22 and 1/2 feet, where 25 is required, and there is non-conforming building coverage currently on the site, if you take buildable upland, which is what we have to use, obviously, it's 27.5 or 3,121 square feet, and we're seeking to go to 3,386, which is 265 square feet in the area that I showed you on the first site plan, which we'll get back to. So there is an increase in a couple of percentage points of lot coverage. We're seeking, as, as Mike described, to raise and replace that end section, the little connector piece and the garage itself, and the non-conforming Westerly setback will be unchanged, and we'll have an increase in the lot coverage of about 2 percent. We're also proposing to upgrade the driveway and the parking area, portions of which are in the conservancy district, and so that requires a special permit as well, and a special permit is also sought to the extent necessary to relocate the HVAC units over onto the slate patio. So we think this site is adequate for the changes that are proposed. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties, we think this is currently compatible and will continue to be compatible with the minor changes to the elevations, as indicated. The extent of the increase in non-conforming nature here is, again, that lot coverage, or excuse me, building coverage in the area of the footprint that I showed you on the initial plan, it's about 265 square feet. That's the only change in non-conformity. We are reducing, and I'll get to it on finding number 12, which is to preview, preview it, the impervious lot coverage substantially on this site, and we're gonna show you that on, on a final slide, which is relevant when we get to number 12. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties or the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and stormwater runoff. Generally here, this is where you look to see whether we have either an approval or a comment from the Conservation Commission to know that we've touched that base. We have, we don't have an order of conditions yet, but I believe, Mr. Chairman, you have a, a note from the Conservation Commission that they believe they can issue an order of conditions with conditions. We've had our hearing there. Impact of scale, sighting, and mass on neighborhood visual character, views, vistas. We don't believe there is any impact on views and vistas in, in the neighborhood, and we think that the redevelopment of this portion of the house has been done tastefully and fits in with the rest of the house. Compatibility of the use with neighboring uses, it continues to be residential, so I don't think that's applicable. Adequacy of methods of sewage disposal. Here, explanation is needed, you have a letter in your file. First of all, let me step back. We have on the site a septic system adequate for six bedrooms. Notwithstanding that, the assessor's card carries four bedrooms for this site. The health department indicated, since we are showing six bedrooms on the floor plan, that a variance would be necessary, and we would need an alternative septic system. Since we received that, Sean, and, and he can field questions from you if you have them on it, has been in touch with Judy Giorgio, and Judy agrees that there is a room that they haven't counted, the assessors haven't counted, that is clearly meets the definition of a bedroom, so she agrees as a six-bedroom capacity system, but her position is there are only five bedrooms on the site. So we have agreed with Judy that we will redo the floor plan and lower it to five bedrooms, and we're offering that as a condition. So we believe we have that particular question resolved. So we're offering a condition of five bedrooms, Judy believes five bedrooms will be fine without any change in the septic system, and Sean has had those discussions with her, and you, you can direct your questions with respect to that. And part of my findings, I've offered that condition at the end, that it be limited to five, and we give you a revised floor plan that shows just five bedrooms, as opposed to the six. Impact on traffic flow and safety, we don't think there is any, no noise and litter, there are adequate utilities, there's no formula business, number 12. So we're in the floodplain with the addition, and there's an expansion, a lateral expansion of 191.5 square feet of house in the flood zone. Now, we don't think that's creating a problem within the flood zone, because we have an elimination within the flood zone of just shy of 800 square feet of impervious, existing impervious pavement in the driveway, which, some of which is being taken up by the expansion of the house, that's fitting into that area, 191 square feet, and the rest is a reduction, we're simply taking up the pavement and making it impervious driveway section there. In addition to that, since the number 12 calls for the impact of the lateral extension on the site, the entire site, I wanted to bring to your attention that within the, there's also an inland conservancy district here, as well as a coastal one, which is the floodplain. In the, if you take what we're doing in the inland district as well, there's total impervious coverage being removed of 2,514 square feet, and that was what the driver was for the Conservation Commission, and so they were in favor of that. That also made the difference when we went to the planning board, as we were required to do, because this is a, a driveway modification within the conservancy district, you need their recommendation as well. I think you'll find, Mr. Chairman, that they've made a favorable recommendation, we went and presented that same evidence at their hearing. Now, obviously, your call to make your finding. So we think we can meet 12 in a satisfactory way with respect to the floodplain, we think, frankly, we'll leave the floodplain better than it is today with respect to impervious. So that's our case. Sean can walk you through any of those reductions in impervious, if you feel it's necessary or otherwise answer questions about his back and forth with Judy Giorgio since the memo she sent to you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who, in Microsoft Teams, who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate on the screen now you'd like to be introduced into the conversation.
There is no one that would like to speak in favor.
Okay, I'll read the correspondence. The first is from Jay Briggs, our building commissioner. I've reviewed the proposed plans and documents. The existing dwelling falls within the AE 12 floodplain by elevation. The proposed reconstructed lateral addition is considered a substantial improvement, however, will not trigger the need to elevate the entire house, as it will not be structurally connected to the rest of the dwelling, which is allowed by the building code. I have no issues with the project. Jewish Giorgio writes, as Mr. Ford mentioned, I've reviewed the plan to add an addition. The proposed floor plan shows an increase in bedrooms from four to six. The addition of bedrooms, septic flow with this property will require approval by the Board of Health in the installation of an IA septic system. Catherine Halpern, Chair of the Planning Board in town, writes on August 11th, the Planning Board at their August 8th meeting reviewed the ZBA's request for comment. After review of this request, the Board voted 7-0-0 to send a positive recommendation with the condition that the proposed driveway and parking area to the north of the conservancy district boundary be constructed with a permeable material and shall be constructed in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water. Have any questions, let us know, and that extends, that's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone in the audience or Microsoft Teams who has a specific question or would like to speak against this application? If so, now is the opportunity to indicate on the screen you wish to speak.
There is no one to speak in opposition that has a specific question.
Okay, questions from the board, Randy?
No questions.
Paul?
No questions.
Dave?
Dave Thompson, no questions.
I have no questions.
Well, I just have one, and I, I don't think we have the answer in our file, but when the 1990s rebuild was done, was the coverage increased, the building coverage, the footprint increased?
I don't know that, Mr. Nixon.
I, I think it was, at the time.
Okay.
I think it was at the time. I'm not 100% sure, I did have eyes on those drawings early on in the process. I believe it was the addition of the entry piece that you can just see at the top of the screen here that Sean has. I think it was that piece right there, with a subtle addition out in the back of, of the family room towards the waterside, I think, I'm not 100% sure on that, though.
So that was a, a minor, would you consider that a minor addition?
I think in, in the grand scheme of things, yes, it was a minor addition, however, the inside of the house was probably renovated at that time, too, so...
Well, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, thank you for the answer, yeah. Paul, deliberations?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave each seconds.
And that takes a vote. Randy?
Yes.
Paul?
I'll vote yes.
Dave Thompson, yes.
Dave each votes yes.
And I vote yes, okay. Paul, what do you think of this?
I think it's certainly not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and as a result, I would vote in favor.
Dave T.
Dave T. also is gonna vote in favor of this, it's a nice old house, knew the original owner very well. It's just, it's a nice area, it's a nice project, congratulations.
It meets all, all of our applicable criteria, and I would be supporting it.
Randy?
I agree with my colleagues.
Yeah, I, I, I have mixed feelings, because it's so beyond the 15 percent.
Yeah, but it is so as a result of the floodplain, you know, it's a 44,000 square foot lot, so it's...
Right, yeah, yeah, no, I understand that. It, it isn't going to stop me from voting yes, but it just is...
I hear you.
Is bothersome, you know what I mean? That's why I asked a question about, oh, yeah, you know, it's the creeping, okay, well, it's a couple of, what's this, what'd you say it was, 265 square feet?
Yes.
Okay, well, it might have been 200 before, and two years from now, it might be another 300, I mean, it keeps... I'm talking to...
I could tell you this, if anything else gets done to this house, it has to be fully brought up to flood compliance, so...
Oh!
So I don't, I don't think we're coming back for another 200.
Okay, well, okay, well, anyway, do we need any conditions whatsoever on this?
Yes, I think we want to approve the application for additions to the structure, because they're not substantially more detrimental, but that approval be conditioned upon the dwelling having not more than five bedrooms, and the floor plan should be revised to show the five bedrooms, and a copy shall be submitted to the zoning board. That's with respect to the additions. I think we also need a vote with respect to the driveway.
I think you do.
Since you're requesting a special permit with respect to the driveway, and as to that, I would condition it on the recommendations of the planning board with respect to that driveway.
Yeah, they, they are shown on that plan as, as being impervious. I'm sorry, pervious, we've changed it.
So I, I will move to approve the application for the special permit with respect to the proposed additions to the structure and upgrades, because they're not substantially more detrimental, and with the conditions that I previously set forth, and I second that.
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
I will vote yes.
I vote yes.
Yes, and do you have any idea when that new site plan would be delivered to Sarah?
The, the new interior floor plan?
Yes. We'll take care of that. When would you like them? Next week?
How about tomorrow by 11?
Would, really? You'd like that?
No, no, I'm only...
Could be done.
We just...
No, I know we could. I have to make a phone call.
Yeah, but we need Judy Giorgio to throw a little holy water on the plan, too, just to make sure she's...
Okay, next week's great.
We have several meetings coming up, so if you can just email them to me, I will get them in front of the chair and in front of Judy.
Sure.
Okay, great.
And then, secondly, I will move to approve the special permit with respect to the driveway with the conditions recommended by the planning board.
Okay. And Dave each seconds.
Okay, need a vote on that, Randy?
Yes.
Paul?
I'll vote yes.
Dave?
Dave Thompson, yes.
Dave each votes yes.
And I vote yes, thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
Again, a unanimous vote. I don't think there's anything else to be brought before our board today. The official time, Sarah, it looks like it's 6 o'clock, but I don't know if that's right or wrong.
It is 6:00 PM.
Okay, 6:00 PM, we need to vote?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second it?
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
Dave Thompson, yes.
And I vote yes, and I vote yes. Good night, and till next week.
Good night, thank you.